Last one.
I have my.
Throwing her voice. Almost together.
We had a malfunction there.
Might as well start with that stuff.
Yeah, we.
Okay, we're ready and we can start with whatever you want.
Okay, we'll start with the non gap real quick. Davey out the old one, which is what you saw before with the $200,000 requested to cut 40,000. As you can see, we got 40,000. However.
There's always a highway.
Yes, we added 35 back in, but that's from this year, just in case we can't get the parts and our gearbox for the new door is floating around in the harbor somewhere, so we're not sure when we're going to get that and if they're going to be able to get in here. Cause we have to get all the parts and then they fly somebody up from Fort Worth. Kind of they fly a couple of guys up from Fort Worth. But a lot could hamper that, so. If we do it this year, we won't have it. But if we don't, it'll be there. I mean, like you said, we can, you know, it just wouldn't be there if we did it this year. We won't do another one next year. And that's the change is definitely. So the overall list actually shrunk by 5,000 because we added that carryover. From this year. But the main one shrunk went from 200 to 160 and that's the remodeling here for 40,000. Yeah.
And it's always possible that asbestos abatement won't be that much.
No, okay, never mind. Well, the reason being Dave is.
We'll find something else to abate.
Yeah, we will.
So it's just like, that's our budget.
Yeah, we try to get.
Stop you spending up.
Well, we want to get as much of this done as we can. Cause we still run the risk in the basement. That we still have the pipes. We've gotten them out of all the storage facilities. But if somebody pops a hole in one of those things, now I gotta, we gotta sh- corridor the area off. I gotta bring somebody in. And as that stuff ages, you know, it becomes less and less flexible and contain and that stuff is the most the stuff in the basement that's around the pipes, stuff in the floor as long as the carpet's there.
Right, it's sealed.
Yeah.
It isn't the, it's just in the tile, which it's a much.
Two percent.
Two percent and the stuff around the pipes is much hotter.
Yeah, it's about 60, 65.
Okay, so.
And this is two to five, four percent depending on mast or stuff.
Okay. So don't lift the tiles.
Where's the install additional outlet supposed to go in 2023?
That would, that's the electrical piece of it.
Or the HR?
Yeah, that would be the HR. We'll look at that more in detail. I didn't really look at 2023.
So your HR remodel is really 180.
It'll probably be less than that, Jake. We just haven't, that's just a placeholder for 2023. And that would also, because it's a extra electrical, we can go back and retrofit other offices that need it by our electricians. That's the plan. If we don't need it, get.
How is our, our electrical? I mean, we go adding circuits and add more goodies on that line. Our circuits are good in this whole building to take more load?
We actually added more load just recently. We redid our service, yes. Yeah, completely, so.
We have, we have three squirrels now.
Yeah.
I just know when I was plugging something in in my office, they were worried it was gonna overload the breaker. And it was like one item.
And that's part of the electrical piece that we do when we do these remodels is while there might be enough here. There are still, the circuits haven't been, when we put the, we put the new service in, we didn't spend all the extra money to revamp all the circuits. Yeah, that happens every time we remodel it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the other one is the post RV cover. Where does that come from? I mean, are they gonna be staying through the winter or why?
That was a request. Yeah, they pushed that out, but that's a request from the public. We met with the Trout Lake people. And they, they had a list of items that we put it on somewhere. And one of theirs was to facilitate having a person there, a park host. They would really like to have a cover over their RV so they could spread out. Well, they're trying to keep making it enticing for to get a park host or keep a camp host.
Yes.
And, cause they're hard to get.
Have we had any problem with that? Are we paying them?
We've only had one for two years and it was actually somebody that camped at the park for 20 years and wanted to keep camping here. And so it worked out good, but that's not that's not normal. So you're kind of competing with other locations to try and entice somebody to come and stay at your park and be the camp host. That's at some point we'll get to that.
That's 2023 and I'm sure we'll discuss that.
Yes, exactly.
This time next year.
Yeah.
Or before.
So one other thing that, that keep in mind, so the Trout Lake Park or Trout Lake people would like to see us make improvements to the playground that's there for day use and they've talked, we met with them, they, one of the things they wanted to do, they're kind of dialed into the RCO grants with the state and know that that's a possibility. Those are 50% match grants. Depending on what it is, it might be less, but that's typical to 50%. And so the cycle for that is this next year it will open up again. In 22, I'm pretty sure.
I think so. I got some stuff from.
Yeah, so they will likely come in and talk to you all about that.
Yes.
Cause they are pretty adamant that they wanted to see something, some kind of improvements done. So. Just so you know.
Yeah, we pushed off some of their stuff because honestly, while it's nice, you know, it'd be nice to have extra parking for that. It's hard for me to say I would park it over, you know, a faucet going out or, you know, water going out or a building leak.
Right.
Okay. That's all I got on that.
Okay. So since there might be others on the line that are interested, I don't know if you wanted to talk about space in the new building and and there might be others that are here to listen as well or just get to that when we.
Why don't we wait and we'll do that at 11?
Oh, okay.
If you guys can stick around after your time, we'll do that at the end, cause I think that's.
Okay.
Saving for the discussion is, I think some of the folks will, are, will be either here or they're, they're here now, but let's put that on, let's get your other stuff done.
Okay.
We'll take that at the end of your time at the transition.
Sounds good. All right, two things that are on your consent agenda are waivers, fee waivers at the fairgrounds. So high school rodeo and the equestrian teams have requested fee waivers, but they're also saying that they'll do in-kind service to offset that expense as well. They offered up a number of hours to be used between now and end of the spring, which is next spring is probably more reasonable to actually do something out there now. So so those two are on your agenda and they're, they kind of talk about those offsets in the request for waivers. Okay, on the construction side, the grant funded signs and guidepost project actually Wash Dot actually the manufacturer actually has the signs, but now Wash Dot has gotten rid of their inspectors after the 18th and so they don't have anybody to inspect them anymore. And so now we're waiting on that, but we're gonna go ahead, the contractor is gonna go ahead and install the guideposts so they'll get started with those and hopefully Wash Dot will get it together and be able to inspect those signs so we can put them up.
So they had to inspect the signs before we put them up?
Yes, on fitting jobs, the material and the signs actually get inspected by Wash Dot and certified. They're all stamped on the back that somebody actually looked at them and that's Wash Dot that does that. They send a person out to the
Those aren't certified at the point of manufacture?
Yeah, so they'll, the company they're buying from.
The sign, but time it was shipped from.
There, that is who we're buying them from or the contractor, we buy signs from, they actually make them, they have silk screening and material cutting machines and they make them there and Wash Dot certifies and they actually go to the plant.
Yeah, make sure that. Again, I'm curious what the extra step is.
It's just more tax. They do that with catch basins and everything.
Yeah, everything is.
Everything is inspected. That was added years ago.
Okay.
It's just an extra step that.
Well, it's an extra person and a.
Great job.
What's gonna happen? I just.
They have to go through the hiring process for an inspector.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you know, they have a whole, if you've ever been to Tumwater, they have a whole group of facility that that's all they do. Is tests.
There's less people there now, though.
We have a lot less people.
Yeah.
But we're looking, they're looking.
Pretty. I just, I just cannot think of another that it's the same. You know, if I buy electrical equipment from, you know, it's stamped, you know, it's UL, it's been inspected, you know, it comes, they don't, I don't have the inspector come in to check that. Like the equipment is already been inspected and long as I haven't altered it, it's still, it seems redundant, but okay.
Yeah, that's the statement.
You were using federal dollars with. I probably would. He's like, oh no, that somebody could have changed it in the.
Yeah.
In transit.
A lot of the rules are from the Feds. If you're using Fed dollars, this is part of that.
Zero trust.
Yeah.
We're not all idiots. So we're apparently cheaters.
Yeah, all right, big overhead for these things.
Yes.
So West Garland, we're still waiting for signs. I don't even think they have the signs yet.
No.
And it may be the inspection piece that continues to drag on on that one too. Roosevelt grade, there's no problem paving these days, so they're paving the Waring course out there this week and should be done by the end of the week, weather dependent. But it's a little drier over there and so they're doing okay and, and should finish by the end of the week. And then they'll start installing guard rail, which is probably the longest piece of the job. There's a lot of guard rail going up that hill.
Did they have guard rail before?
Yes, in most places. There were some areas that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Be careful.
Yeah. Let's see. So on the design side, we're getting Courtney Road ready to advertise this month. Clicking that path, struggling to get ahold of parks people because I think they're no longer there either. And so it's just challenging working with state government these days. And then we're trying to wrap up the courthouse parking lots, getting those ready. My maintenance stuff, I didn't update, but basically most of the guys, we started hauling materials to Roosevelt to the landfill from our contaminated site. And so most of both sides of the crew are using dump trucks to haul material and they're actually back hauling, we're the back haul and actually hauling rock to Badger from Mattson Quarry. So we're saving money for the project there and roads picking that up. And at some point they'll stop hauling material and then that cost will all be transferred back to the building cost and for the parking lot. So and then I think we saved almost $5 a ton. The landfill cut us a break on disposal of contaminated materials, so.
What was, what was, was it 36 bucks a ton and we save 4 bucks?
Yeah, we're down to, down to 31 something and change. So it's, we save a bit of money there per ton. So.
And do they just mix it in and lay it out on top when they do their lifts though, then it aerates and?
Yeah, they don't consider it hazardous because of the amount of fuel and the type of fuel that's in it, so.
Can they use it for daily cover? Is that?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure what they're using it for, just happy.
They're taking it.
Yeah, and they, their contractor originally wanted to take it to Wasco and they were, they were more expensive and we aren't doing that anyway, so.
Get some of our work.
So by giving them the, the daily fill cover, it's costing us 30 bucks a ton.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Usually we like that, cause we benefit from it. We get our cut. Now it's us.
Nice to have a place to take it.
Yes.
So that's what they're doing mostly there. Maybe somebody in the area is still grading though, so.
I saw the brusher going up.
Yeah, we're.
Highway this morning when I left, so I know there's at least one, one person out doing something else.
Yeah, all of our trucks are working though, all. So facility site, so we got, we are delayed one week and I sent out a, an email to let everybody know and I've called the directors as well to reshuffle. So I think you guys, you guys remain the same location. We're still doing, moving you guys when you're calling. And then that, that meant shuffling everybody rather than just moving everybody out a week, so. Which it, it's still gonna work for everybody, cause they'll still be able to do their business from where they're at until we move on. Although I think Health had a vaccination clinic they wanted to start right away. But Erin said she's just gonna move it or cancel it, re-schedule people, so. The civil site work, like I said, we're over here removing that material. We'll probably, we're looking for the most economical way to backfill the hole. When we're done and probably be material from one of our quarries. Since there's a lot of groundwater, we will, probably will put Corey's balls in the bottom. So we don't have to worry about having a mucky mess. Until we get up above that and then we'll, we'll cover it with some fabric and then place something else that's finer graded on top of it cheap.
Is it looking like it's gonna be as big as they originally thought now that you're digging out or?
It's big, yeah. And then we don't know, we think we got the limits, but we won't know for sure. They're, they've taken samples at the west limit where they assume that there is.
It's the sign inspector's other job.
Yeah. Yeah, so we will have to get the all clear before we can actually backfill, which is, we'll, we'll delay it a little longer. So we'll get there. But the hole is close to what they said size wise and hopefully we'll stay there.
I looked at it this morning, it's not as big as I feared.
Are they gonna make us do test pits and wells and all that too?
Not sure yet, but they said that might be a possibility for two wells. So we'll see. Once they give us the all clear to backfill, then we'll know. That'll probably be a condition as well. Okay, so the flooring in the new building that they picked and we, was available now has issues, so.
I've not heard this.
Yeah, so.
The new stuff is defective as well.
Yeah, it's supposed to have a bebevel cut on all edges and some are, some aren't, it's kind of random. Some square cut, some bevel cut, you know, I, I think it looks okay, but the contractor, the general isn't happy. It feels like they just had something that wasn't right. That's why they had a lot of it available.
We'll see how they notice.
So we're working through that. We'll still move in when we're moving in and if they, we, it gets replaced at some point, they're gonna have to do it after hours. So it won't affect us doing business. It'll be all on them. Let's see. Furniture, so all the furniture in the offices and some of the conference tables in the office spaces are there. They still have some seismic hangers to install and some of the drop ceilings, so they're not putting the tables in those rooms so they don't get used as a scaffolding and get ruined. We did get the loaner furniture for the lobbies for free, so that's.
They changed their mind.
Yeah, we just sick Angie on them and, and she took care of it. And they, they, they were pretty gracious after they, I think, thought about it for a while too. That as much as we're buying that this was a small cost.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's see. So our delay is because of the glass in the windows inside the building, so they can't dial in the heating and cooling systems without that glass. And so we're a week out, the glass should be there today. And they'll start installing it and then more arrives at the end of next week. And so we, we never, we, we won't get there till the glass is installed in those areas. So it's a week delay. Courthouse. Oh, so schedule, I got that revised on here. Courthouse entry, we now have the north entrance open, the ADA ramp, but isn't open because of the front parking lot isn't available yet, but soon. That should get paved out today. And then I don't know when the strippers are, will get here the next day. It's not raining, it's supposed to rain most of the next of the week, most of the week here anyway. And Jeff's guys are working on stucco and painting, general cleaning, cleanup and.
Actually, yeah, not too much right now, just can't paint this weather, so they'll be back when we get a window.
Then the best fuel out front.
Yeah, our guys just put together that.
See, so impact units are all delayed till next year. Might as well talk.
Yes.
We'll talk about this before we get too far down. So this type of a plaque is what we have at the Pioneer Center in, in the courthouse.
Yes.
And so with that in mind, we've kind of drafted, drafted one up that would make sense based on what we've done in the past. It was typically the commissioners that were here when it, the project was approved to move forward. But that's your call. So we would put together a plaque just like the one that's in the courthouse entrance and Pioneer Center for the new building, if that's something that you would like to do. For the building dedication.
Well, I would, I would say that I was here as a civilian when this was brought up before by a citizen to the board, not me. And those commissioners decided against it.
Growing that up. I don't recall that, but I'm not.
It was a conversation.
I've chosen to forget it.
The citizen had an issue with the building not looking like the old courthouse. And that we should redesign it to look like the courthouse. And if we did so, he would buy a commemorative plaque to put on the building. And at that time, they chose not to, so for whatever that's worth.
So I mean, the idea of having a plaque on it at all or that they?
What I remember. So I did not know when I brought this up that, that those were the names that would be on the plaque. So if that is the board's decision, I would suggest we make sure it's okay with those people. Because I don't remember it being.
Okay.
It's just not very clear, because in 2022.
Yeah, that's my problem.
We're not the commissioners that were there, so that's kind of awkward.
No, it's dedicated though, that it's when it's dedicated, which is, I think when I, I mean, we'll have some kind of ceremony. I mean, it could be when we started or I don't, it doesn't matter. I'm just thinking when we dedicate it at some point. We have an open house and invite the public in or up kind of ceremony, if that's what you choose to do.
Right.
Yeah, either way, I don't.
I'd say for me, I don't care when, really, as far as I think there should be a plaque on the building. I think that is tradition that you on big, you know, public buildings, you put a, you do a dedication plaque as far as whose names are on it. I, I don't, cause for me, it doesn't make any difference. I'm in the old, you know, or the new. It doesn't. So it doesn't make any difference to, I don't care if my name's on it or not, but there should be a dedication plaque on there. Cause I just think it's, I look at the one that's on this building. You know, I, I've looked at it before and I think it's, I just think it's important historically to put those on there. As far as sometimes, you know, traditions are good to. So, but I, I will defer to my seatmates. It makes no difference to me if it's the.
I guess I, I will speak my case and then defer to my seatmates. I have a problem with those names of that day. Because those were not commissioners on that day. That's my biggest issue. I mean, those are the commissioners in 2020, not 2021 and not 2022. And those, I do agree, those are the commissioners that approved the building. But those are not the commissioners dedicated to the building and those are not commissioners paying for the building. With that, I would default my seatmates.
So if you put those three commissioners, it needs to say approved by commissioners. But since it's a dedication, so you, you put like on this side, approved by these three commissioners, dedicated by these three commissioners.
Okay.
That, that would be the only way I see that making sense if you want to have that.
Right, and I would put the date. So 2020, these guys, 2022 with these.
Okay, yeah, that's a compromise.
And then I would double check with them that they want your name on the building, because like I said, I remember last time that they didn't, so I don't want to do something that they don't want to do.
And yeah, that's, I, I don't care. That's, that's up to them. I guess if they don't, then just get rid of the whole approved by. And, and for the record, I, my name's on it here and I'm the one that I paid for 95% of this building, so it's not, we're, we're well, the building was dedicated 05, I was elected in 06 and we're making the last. So, yeah, so it's not that, and I didn't pay for anything, the people of this county paid for all of it.
Yeah, we came back and did this later, as a matter of fact.
Yeah, it was after I was.
Yeah, Ray was still here.
Ray was still here. He was the only one. Don, no, I think.
Don wasn't here either, no, it was Rex.
It was Rex.
Rex, Ray and you.
You that did it, so.
And we dated it back to.
Back to when it was approved and when it was done, cause the building was not done, but some traditions change, which is fine.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could just have the, the first part dedicating the building in some year and then the county logo, just without the names. We could do that.
I do kind of like though that it, to show that it was approved in 2020 and it was completed and dedicated 2022, that's, that's amazing. You can build that that fast. I kind of like that as well.
Okay.
That would be my vote. If you get there, the ex commissioners to sign off on it.
Okay. No, no, I want to think about.
You're gonna have one on each side.
No, one, one way, one. Yeah, I get it twice. Yeah.
Usually my name is my. David. Remove the date and then say approved in the names and the logo in the middle and dedicated on this day or on this year with the names on it, right?
We'll mark something up for you guys to take a look at.
Hey. The waiver.
Writing?
Yeah.
Okay. We talked about that first. So I do have one other request that's not on here. So we, Susan Gregson retired. She was our finance master and she's gone. We promoted Pam Byerly into that position and we'd like now permission to fill Pam's spot.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
One more thing.
Okay.
We talked about Annex V.
We talked about annex five and uh that's still the thing to surplus it. One, I would advise that we get it. It is in the documents that they have to move it by a day. Cause if not, we'll have the thing there next year. We'll be looking.
Right, somebody will be living.
Yes. Also, we have to bring forward to you guys the rejection of, since you guys approved it.
Right.
Awarded it, you have to reject it. So we'll prepare a board.
And what's the penalty?
I don't know. We haven't talked to the contract. Contract could file a claim and ask for the whole amount of money. I don't think they will, to be honest with you. I don't think they'll have that big of a rum about it. I mean, they would have liked the job, but I don't know that they'll have a big problem.
Who is the contractor?
Mission.
Okay.
So if we have to pay for the whole project, I'll have to build the whole project.
Well, exactly. I don't, I don't know that you will. I've seen it's happened in the past, not here, but it has happened. And that's usually because there was some different, was it because they rejected the bids? It's because they awarded to the second place person. And uh.
Should we have? I guess it's, I mean, with any other entity, I would imagine we would have had a contract with the place it was going before we decided to outlay expense. And in this case, we didn't have a contract that the place it was going was going to take it. So it kind of backfired. Uh, but normally. If it's not us, we would have a contract with those people to make sure we don't have this problem.
Yes.
Or a clause in the contract.
Okay, we'll bring us whatever we need.
We will.
Would be nice to.
We'll return.
Yeah, I mean, to, you know, in a perfect world, it would be, you know, goodwill is is valuable.
Yeah, but I I look at it, the guy's got a little bit of time involved, so you know, you know.
But I also am not paying for the whole, I mean, that's unreasonable. It's like, at the very least, it's the come up with some reasonable, because it's.
Time and a time and effort and and.
Well, or lost, lost margin, lost profit. I mean, that's, I mean, that's a legitimate thing. It's a stretch for me because you actually haven't extended, you know, your.
Well, you don't get paid to bid projects.
No, you don't.
You're the second place person, you just eat that.
You just ate and eat that, so.
So I don't think you'll have a problem. I just wanted to let everybody know that that's.
Is this somebody we use a lot for?
Well, they've built projects. Yes, yes.
So as I said, goodwill.
I think, I think he'll be, yeah, I think he'll be. Uh, mission, it's uh Bob Bishers. Again, Bob's pretty recent guy.
Yeah, before we get into the space over the building, Oregon Trail Rally is coming this weekend, Saturday. Just, we talked about it before, but it's now it's here.
Okay, any general public works? Stuff before we talk about space. Okay? Thank you. I don't have.
Okay. Uh, so I sent you guys um an email. Not too long ago with the square footage. For whole spaces. So right now, HR.
I haven't seen that.
Yet. I think it's.
Or if you know what they are.
It is in the B O C C. Yes. Sorry, I thought you guys all got that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are you gonna drop them down? That's fine with me too.
And did you, did you cut out um weed, what we're supposed to be getting out of those numbers?
Yeah, so so HR space is about twelve hundred and forty seven square feet. Um, WSU and weed combined is eighteen hundred and forty seven square feet. Of that eighteen forty seven, you know, I just said weeds about twenty five percent, which is four hundred and sixty square feet, which brings WSU's. Space in that area down to about thirteen hundred and eighty seven square feet. So fairly close.
I do. Marty's, let's call it his old office that has all the bookcases that it is. That's still Marty's room or is that now?
That's went back to Hannah's library. So that would go with Hannah's furnace.
That'd be, I was, I guess I was under the impression when we moved Marty's office. That that Marty was getting both of those spaces for his two employees. I didn't realize that Hannah was taking over the other one.
Yeah, so originally, when we designed it, so we went back to what the original plan was, which was Elizabeth was out in the larger open area. Marty had his office back and then the library was still there. So. But anything is possible. Um, so anyway, the other, the other thing that uh. Is important to WSU is their storage. So WSU slash weed, their combined storage is two hundred and sixty two square feet. HRs is two hundred and two. So they're fairly close as well, but the upstairs really is a shared, part of shared space, whether they were going to share it or not. I don't know. Uh, the other thing is that Rob's, Rob has more usable space um. Because the um entry in um WSU slash weed is bigger. Uh, Rob's is smaller by about sixty two square feet. So he has most of his square footage inside the office area. It's much smaller um entry for the public.
What you're saying is by the move WSU would end up getting more usable space. As well as more total space because they'd be going from about thirteen eighty seven to twelve forty seven.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah.
HR actually, it's the other way. Yeah. So WSU has a little less.
Current.
Uh, no, a little more now. If they moved, they have less.
Well, they would have less if we're anticipating Marty's second office being a library. If we gave that to Marty, it would be a wash.
Well, because you said HR has twelve forty seven. Okay, and then when we do the math on the combined up above, it comes out to thirteen eighty seven. So if.
For WSU.
For WSU. So if we do a move where WSU goes to HR, in WSU would be gaining sixty square feet.
No, they lose.
Now, they currently have thirteen eighty seven and they're going from thirteen eighty seven to twelve forty seven.
Well, but I guess my argument there is that's thirteen eighty seven if that. Marty's second room was given back to WSU, which that was not my understanding when we made moves. I guess I'm kind of looking at it that uh. Trying to get ahead of future issues. Yes, it might be a down space of a hundred and twenty square feet.
Yeah, so both the office and the storage space are within a hundred square feet. Either way, right? They're close. They're very close.
It's roughly a wash. Yeah. Is Hannah online? Uh, okay. And I want to give you the opportunity to to comment.
And she's talking.
Yep.
Good morning, comm. Uh, I just learned about this this morning and I'm actually on annually top. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I'm not sure if you can hear me.
We can hear you, but it was sketchy there at the beginning. So.
Where are you at?
I am on leave right now. And I just learned about this this morning. Uh, if if I'm not coming through very well, maybe Erica, who is also on the line, I.
Yeah, your, your, uh, your internet connection is not real good. So it works good for a couple sentences and then.
Yeah, I would say call in and not voice over.
Yeah.
Erica is on the line.
Okay. So maybe hand off to Erica. Hannah's trying to zoom in and Hannah should just.
I said, tell Hannah to just call it and don't be voiceover IP.
Maybe you'll have better, better luck.
She said she's on top of a deer, on a, on top of a mountain deer.
Yeah. With that, I don't know that it's gonna get any better.
Yes.
Just after if she could call.
Okay, yeah, we're not, we're not really getting you. I'm sorry.
She's asking, can Erica outline the email that she sent in response to the information that she was informed of?
We didn't get the email.
Erica is on the line. She can.
Okay, go ahead if she's. If she's willing and as directed by her boss, that's fine.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Okay, so I'm going to read Hannah's email. She also sent this to Mr. Anderson if if he wants to pull it up.
He he had actually shared it. So we did, we've all, we've, we all got it. So you can, you can highlight it if you wish.
Um. Hannah just would like me to let you guys know that she just found out about this this morning. Um, we definitely are wanting to be team players on this and she understands Commissioner Anderson's. Um, interest in making the change. Uh, our biggest thing is public work candidate test is that we have worked very hard on scaling down. The amount that we have for our move, but that storage is our number one. Um, topic that we're very kind of concerned about with this. As well as um just kind of working ahead since we kind of had our furniture picked out and there's just going to be some tweaking. That we fear is going to kind of come down the line with this. Um, so I guess part of this is is just all of us having conversations with each other that um. What does this look like now is really kind of the gist of, you know, since you guys can see the email, I don't feel that I need to, you know, read it out. Line item by line item, but I think our biggest thing is um. What does this look like kind of for our department? How do we change some of the furniture? The storage is um, we've lost probably about half the space of our store of our storage with this new move. So what does that look like for us to be able to um be able to give materials? To the public since a lot, everything that goes into storage is things that the public can check out and they do check out. For a lot of it.
Okay. Um, so the the issue of the storage, and I don't know if if um. Hannah's still on there. So it's not, it's not about half based on the numbers that we were given from public works comparing the storied spaces from the. Current um HR space to the, it's, it's about seventy seven percent of the, when I did the math. As far as the story. So it's still, it's about three quarters, just over three quarters of the space, which is a, you know, it's a twenty, twenty three percent reduction in storage, but I don't, I don't know that that is unworkable.
The, I do, I'll bring up the, the letter from WSU when they did their vaccine mandate. Uh, it says we were, we are required to make sure that any county employee in our office verified that they're vaccinated. Or have been granted an exemption pursuant to county policies. Uh, for their building. So I don't know if that plays into their building since they're occupying it. Uh, but according to their policy, anybody that walks in the front door of their building has to be vaccinated. And.
You know, what's the relevance?
This building, everyone in that building needs to be vaccinated.
Well, I'm wondering if that's going to cause a a uh issue with WSU's. Uh, policy, since that's not our policy and we're using this in a building as well. So I don't know that. This isn't really, I guess I'd say a second floor or first floor uh issue. Uh, it's a combining resources issue that could come up to be a problem later. So right now they have their building, their targets. We don't have county employees unvaccinated in the building. Uh, there could be a come up issue. Um, in a month when we combine it to the same building and we don't have the same policies that WSU does. So.
That'd be a good thing for Hannah to research and if they have policies that would have impact our overall building, then they'll have to stay out there until said policies change.
Right, that's what I was saying.
Uh, but that's a different. So.
I was just throwing it up.
And their storage room is different than their library, correct? Erica, or is it one room?
Those are two separate rooms, Commissioner Anderson.
Okay, so um. Rob and I went over today to look at, you know, that the library and how that would fit. And there's an area that goes right down the mall in the main hall. Or inside the room that you could put all of those and have your library open to the public right there. That I think would would fix that whole library issue all in one fell swoop and it doesn't take up that much space. So that that one, I think, is is easy. Um, there are cubicles currently in the HR room that they can use as cubicles. There is the entire um. Conference room that they could use, you know, because WSU has their little conference table there in the middle, but. You'll have your own huge conference room that would work just fine for that. And when I looked at the storage space, it's comparable. If you choose that one L-shaped room or whatever, you're going to be able to fit a lot of stuff in there. And if you can't. Fit everything in there, then there's room out at the fairground.
We have shared storage too in the building. We haven't talked about how we're dividing that up, but there are two, there's one room on the second floor and a large room on the third floor. So there is other space that it could be made up and we'll have to figure out how to divide those up between the offices. I know Dave McClure will probably need some, but he he's really the only office that has none, no storage room. In his uh area, so he'll need some of that space.
Let's say, I can't imagine with the space that's in. Either area that there's not enough uh room for file cabinets or shelving. Or I mean, that is a lot of space in both of those areas. What is, what is their current square footage of where they're, where they were before COVID construction?
I don't know what the square footage was, but it uh. Might be close to HR. It's probably comparable.
That's what I'm saying. Where they were in the old building is about. HR size or.
Yeah. Yeah.
So essentially they would be maintaining size, just not growing.
Yeah.
Where everybody's growing.
So just for my benefit, just so I understand, because I, this was not initiated by me. I don't really know. I I don't have a dog in the fight one way or the other. Other than I'm always, I. You know, there has been planning that has gone on for offices and size and, you know, that went on for multiple years. That it's, I'm, I'm reluctant necessarily without, I want to understand what's the motivation as far as what's the problem that we're trying to solve? By moving these two departments. Again, I don't really care. Does it, does it matter to me? I just want to be careful. That we are not redesigning the building after it's constructed. So what, I mean, what are we, what is it that we're trying to accomplish necessarily by flipping these? Since the spaces are roughly comparable.
I see it as a few different things. Number one, um WSU, when they have the public come in. Um, because they have more public come in than than HR, it would be on the first floor. They can go and do that. Maybe one day they'll have a full-time office manager and they'll have kids in there all the time. Uh, secondly, um, HR currently manages IT, works closely with the commissioners. The second floor is more of that administration, administration side. Um, and more importantly, um, I don't like having my HR department on the first floor with people walking by, looking in all the time. And a lot of private conversations that go on. Maybe just like the uh. IT group where you got the doors, the windows closed probably all the time. Where WSU, I see that as a lot more valuable down there.
Right. My, my two biggest are the public not being able to look right through the windows in HR offices and see who's in there at any given time or other directors getting to see their employee in there and wondering why my employees in HR, because they're walking back and watch. Because they're on the first floor and we can see, and then my second thing is, is we.
Can we not see into the HR department, the space on the second floor?
You would only be able to see into part of, depending on how they're seated of the two offices.
Okay.
Back top of the rooms or main lobbies or anything else before you can. The second one is, is, I guess I would say it's, it's, there's been issues with, I guess, housing WSU and Noxious Speed in the same building before. And I want to get in front of any potential of doing that again.
Okay, that's helpful.
This doesn't come without other items that would have to be done. So there's, um, Rob had mentioned, right now there's a door, there's a shared counter, refrigerator, sink, kind of a community break room between economic development, natural resources and the space, WSU space that for Rob, if people can come in, then there might be other conversations of things that could be overheard in that, because it's open. And so the doorway, that means the doorway, probably the most economical way to do it is to put the doorway over to the other side of that, uh, break area, break room area, um, and then just there'd just be an opening on economic development side instead of a door.
Could you just put a door on the other side and have a door on both sides? The demolishing one?
You can add a door, but we'll never, I mean, it took us nine months to get the frames for those doors. We, we could put something in there that was a standard door.
Right.
Would look like the rest of them. That would be the quickest way to do it.
Well, we're gonna end up.
Possible to.
We're gonna end up probably putting some kind of a standard door. Again, let's go back to saying Marty has two rooms.
Yes.
Uh, and putting a standard door in between those rooms so he can get in and out that way without having to go through HR to get into his offices.
Right.
So that would be a standard door anyway.
That in, so you'd have two, that's the second room, so then you add another door there too.
Right.
Yeah. So, and then, you know, is it fine like that? I mean, we kind of built the security into everybody's office. Do we, you know, then have to put a entry window like we've done everywhere else into that, that library space for weed?
No.
Sorry.
I think it's just as easy, you know, for, for Marty and those guys, you can knock on the door.
Yeah.
If somebody's home, somebody's home, somebody's not, somebody's not home.
Okay.
Yeah, again, I guess I would, I would question, I mean, WSU has two and a half employees. And a lot of their FTE hours are not spent in this area. They're spending the Pioneer Center, so even when you build a building, they're going to be in the Pioneer Center. They're not going to be up here. Marty, a lot of the times, at least in the summer, is going to be out spraying weeds. So. I guess I'm just trying to get the biggest bang for our buck of our building that we can utilize the space there for the employees that are going to be in that building by Monday's week.
Okay, what do you need from us?
So if, if this is the direction we want to go, then we'll start having to plan furniture for, you know, says, will the file cabinets fit in there and bookshelves, getting those things reviewed? Move to the new location. It'd be nice, because a lot of the furniture is connected to the walls. It would be nice to, if we could leave that, if the decision is to move the groups, that can we get by with, here's your new configuration for your office furniture. This is the one that was planned for this space and leave those alone. That would be really nice to be able to do that. There's two cubicles in each space. I, you know, they don't need, there's no need for that. We have the library cabinets that we have to move and do something with, and then I think trying to make everything work. I think Rob had asked for, so the, the storage room that Hannah had is a storage room. There's no ceiling. You know, it's, it had tile floor. Rob had asked that that be, we, we have extra carpet that we can use some of that to carpet that area to kind of dampen the sound. So there's that expense and then aid by getting a new door to soundproof that shared space from HR. That's a door that we'd have to add, and then do we add a doorway between that library and Marty's office? That's, so permission to do those to the carpeting and make the spaces work and leave the furniture, most of the furniture where it is. That would be the things that I think need to be addressed.
Fine with most of that. Uh, when it gets to the furniture issue, I would pick that up with HR to see. Because that's not something I even thought about, so I don't want to rule on furniture.
I mean, I walked over there. It's practically the same furniture. And if they're good with it, if everybody's good with it, I'm happy to not pull it off the walls and move it if you're getting the same thing that it might be left facing, one might be right facing, as long as it's works in those offices, leave it.
Or even if it could be turned in that office and not have to be disassembled and removed. I don't mind tweaking a little bit as long as it is, you know, but, but yeah, I would walk through with HR.
Well, I would actually, if we're going to be fair, I would coordinate with both departments that are moving.
Yes.
This is not, there are two departments that are affected by this, not a single department, so. I think it's, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it and it's just, yeah, as far as, I'm sure, these are reasonable people. They can figure it out.
Yeah.
As far as with the, yeah, even Rob is reasonable.
Sometimes.
Most of the time that we can, we can figure it out as far as the furniture that's, that's there that I'm sure it can be made to work the way it is.
Other than that, yeah.
And then there's a Polycom system in the HR conference room that I'm assuming needs to be moved. And maybe Rob can coordinate that with us.
I don't think they had one in their space originally, so.
No.
Have it actually moved. They haven't put the TV, well, yeah, they haven't done the wiring yet, just now the dragon, yeah.
Yeah, so there's a bit of work to make this happen and then, you know, what does WSU need? And how does all their stuff fit? But as far as extra storage, we have extra storage, the shared storage, we can accommodate that.
Right.
Okay, so that's the direction you want to move. We'll work with both departments to make that happen.
Nope. I think it's best for the long term.
Okay.
Thank you. I guess I should apologize to IT because now they'll never be able to hear us now. They're gonna be right next to you, so they'll always be under your belt.
But it's a good thing. Put a doorway to do.
Yeah.
Rooms, yeah.
Quick guy come on.
They request.
Okay, Ms. Mochi. Updates I hear.
Yes, I just wanted to circle back. So I did hear back from Departments of Ecology for the Shoreline Grant for eighty-four thousand dollars. And so last night, when I was here, I have permission to apply for the grant. And I just want to circle back to make sure that the county is willing to accept the grant.
How far do you think we're gonna get through the shorelines with eighty-four thousand dollars?
We're hoping, um, that we can actually get it completed by twenty twenty-three, June twenty twenty-three. That's how long, you know, the, the money is good for two years. And we are getting pretty close. My focus right now is to have the critical areas updates done and I have a draft looking at something. I just need time to make sure that incorporate every comments that we're receiving so far. And the goal is to have the critical areas updates before the planning commission early twenty twenty-two and then bring it back to the board for adoption. And then my focus will then shift to the shoreline.
And are you looking to make sure that the critical areas of the shoreline lands jive and we don't have language that could be interpreted on either side?
Yes, and that's, that's the goal, because right now we do have conflicting, you know, requirements. And the critical areas will then be, you know, rough, adopted by reference and so it would actually be more logical to get the CIO done before we work on the SMP. So everything would be, you know, consistent throughout.
Bots, comments?
What's the chances of this one is up in court too?
Hi.
Hi.
Extreme, man?
Extreme winner.
Wait, did you mean CEO or the shore?
Well, either.
I mean, that's, that's honestly where I'm at. If it's gonna go to court, can we run them all together so we only go to court one?
That's what I was thinking and why ask?
I mean, I know there's pluses and minuses, but the court side is expensive. And I know there's probably a question for you.
Yes, because the state mandates are different. One is on the GMA, one's on the SMA. And we need to comply with both. So I, I couldn't answer the, the questions in regard to any possible litigation. But I know I will have to get both updated. They have different schedules.
Yeah, well, we've long scheduled that.
Yes.
I know.
We still need to.
Trying to figure out how we would get them together so that if there were challenges, there would only be one challenge, but I don't think that's gonna happen.
Well, it's kind of what we do with, you know, a SEPA and a CUP, you know, you take it together and the
Here at once.
Critical areas in the SMA.
Say it possible, and I mean, I like the idea, it's just, I don't know.
And then for the CIO, uh, so after the Commissioners stepped up to, you know, one way or the other, have the final decisions. Anybody appeal that will go straight to Superior Court for the SMA. After Commissioners approval, you still need to go before the Ecology for the final report.
The CIO, they don't, it's the courts, the court. So, you know. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with proceeding. I mean, we have to, we're trying, to try.
At least we've got dollars.
So I will put that on next week's consent agenda. With that, my consultant, who's helping me with both CIO and SMA, the contract is going to expire at the end of this year. So I'm going to ask for a second amendment to his contract and it's going to go through June twenty twenty-three. And for the purpose for this contract and to complete the CIO, he is going to add about twenty thousand dollars to the contract. And I already accounted them for in my budget for next year. So there will be no change to that. Make sure there's no question.
I suppose that's a bargain.
When I.
Yeah, this is, this is the first Trump.
Right, they're right. He's a sign inspector on this. Fight gig. At least I know what my next career's gonna be.
I'm good. I know we didn't accept dollars the first time and even if we did, we would still be in the same position and we're gonna have to try to do something differently. I know these, this salt that's worked all over the state and apparently they've had success other places, so hopefully we can have some success, but it's been a lot of money to.
Go, go forth, do good, do good words.
Go forth and try to do good work.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a motion a second to recess until one o'clock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, one o'clock. I will call the meeting to order. Let the record show, all three Commissioners are present in chambers. We'll start first with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Chairman, make motion to approve and business agenda with one add-on under new business resolution matter adopted in the twenty twenty-two preliminary budget and setting a public hearing.
I will second that motion. Give a motion a second on the business agenda with the one add-on, any further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
One minute.
Uh, yeah.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, make motion that we approve the September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-one minutes as presented.
Second motion, eighth of a motion and a second on the September twenty eighth minutes. Any discussion on those? There being none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. That brings us to citizen comment. This is opportunity for citizens to make comment to the Board of Commissioners on items that are not on the agenda later. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. We will start in chambers. We have folks here live and in person. So if there's anybody here that wishes to make comment, this is your opportunity. Okay, Ms. Kelsey, go ahead. Please state your name for the record, if you would, please.
Susan Kelsey, Goldendale. And I think come for a while, mostly because of the vaccine mandate and my fear that it would come to the county and so I've been proactive for a while. And in that process, I've listened in on the Health Department, Erin, Ms. Erin, I don't know her last name. And then I've sat, I believe, twice on the Health Board and I've reached out to Erin's office to try and find out the goal of the County Health Department regarding COVID. And then extending that to the Board of Health. What is their goal for COVID in our county? And as of today, I haven't had a response. So I'm, I'm not sure where to go from here other than here. And so I have a request for that. If you want to give it to me in writing or, um, you know, hear me to answer that or.
Making a note, you're not, that's like, I'm obviously not gonna give you the answer in writing.
Okay.
No. I mean, right now.
Okay.
We can, I think we can certainly get you a, we can get you some kind of answer.
Okay. Not today. Not right here, I mean.
No.
Okay.
Not that I believe.
I, I don't know that there's an answer, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I'm not seeing Erin.
Okay. Okay, so do I hand this in to you?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. We are in citizen comment. I'm gonna go on Zoom for the next comment and inquire if there's anybody that wishes to make public comment, uh, from Zoom. Please unmute yourself, raise your hand, star six if you're on a phone. Okay. I will come back. I will check in again. I will check again in the room if there's anybody that wishes to make public comment. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Rick Wagner. With cease, for the last ten months, you Commissioners have stated you know nothing about any specific Knight Road solar plant and that you cannot speak about any specific solar plant until one is put before the county. Mucci Lynn Blad has confirmed no solar plant has been presented to her. Commissioner Christopher, I'd like to know how you can recuse yourself from the specific carriage or solar plant when it Commissioner Christopher, I'd like to know how you can recuse yourself from the specific carriage or solar plan when it does not exist. Your recusals are irrelevant, meaningless, and without merit. Neither have valid. How can you recuse yourself from something that doesn't exist? A specific plant. And Mr. Soder, I'd like to ask you something. Last month's K L C K radio interview, you said you hold regular community meetings. So that citizens can interact with you. Two weeks ago, I wrote you an email asking you when the next community meeting was going to be held and you've never responded. Do you plan to have one so that we can interact with you?
Sure, when I'm invited to a community for a meeting, that's generally when I go.
Well, you also said when you don't hear from people, you sneak.
Yeah, once a year or so. If I don't hear, what I said was if I don't hear from a specific community, generally at least once a year, I will actually reach out and ask to be invited to come. It's the.
So if I invite you to a change casey meeting, you will come?
A.
The change casey meeting Wednesday night at seven.
What I was referring to was the community council meetings is the community meetings I was referring to.
Well, will you hold a town hall with the citizens? You said you've done dozens and dozens and you love town halls. When will you do a town hall? Do you have to be invited for that?
It's it depends on what what's your definition of a town hall?
Well, a gathering of the citizens so we can talk to you and discuss the issues.
Sure.
When will you hold?
I will hold one when I am asked by a community to have one.
I am the community.
No, I don't believe you are a community. Are you, sir?
Well, I am part of the community.
You are.
You know, you were discussing a plaque on that building. Why don't you dedicate it to the citizens of Clickittack County?
We're the ones.
That's what it says on the plaque.
Well, you were talking about whether your names were going to be on it and all that. Does it have your name on it? I can't see it from here.
It doesn't have my name on it.
Well, that's good. So it will be dedicated to just the citizens. That's good. All right. So we'll ask, we'll get the community to ask you for a town hall. That's all I have. Thank you.
We are still in citizen comment. I'll go back online and see if there's anybody. Sherry, okay, Sherry, your turn.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I would like to follow up with Mr. Wagner's request to host a town hall. As a community member, that you've been asked for almost a year now to answer questions regarding the solar large industrial solar sites that are currently in the works being to to have a cup, a conditional use permit used for them for night road. This is no secret. You've had a moratorium for the cup process for night road solar industrial solar site. So you also know of the Caranger proposal, which as a citizen, I am going to go on the record and say, I believe if you have a proposal for such a large project, that these proposals should be brought in front of our board of adjustment and also to have a public hearing. And since the commissioners are refusing to take that process by the scapegoat and the double speak of of that you don't have an application, but so you can't do anything about it. I am requesting that a town hall be held so we can discuss this with you. This is serious. You know, I've talked about it every time. This isn't just a dump. This isn't just a motocross. This is our valuable. Our, when I speak, Mr. Soder, I mean, the citizens of Clickittack County, we all have interest in its future. Including you three gentlemen, you have interest in the future. So again, I would like to ask for a town hall as another citizen member. And please, Mr. Christopher, I've emailed you. Send me your reasoning on why you would recuse yourself to to discuss in specific Caranger Caranger project when there is no such project on the table, according to you gentlemen. So please be, but please be transparent with the citizens. Host a town hall meeting and let's discuss the future of Clickittack County together. And I second what the guy that called in last week that maybe there's something else we can do with our land. If hemp is such a big product, why don't we do that? At least it preserves our land and doesn't wreck it forever. Or for how many decades? We don't know what solar destruction will do to our farmland for how many decades. So please consider the citizens. We've been asking you for months. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. I'll come back to the room. There's anybody else? No. Okay, Ms. Gilbert, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much. I I agree with Sherry. I think that this has been a constant ask on the citizens of Clickittack County that government be more transparent and government be made more available. And so I highly encourage you as the county commissioners to come and meet and discuss the issues that citizens have concerning development in Clickittack County. The other thing I'm going to ask is that we address the economic projection, the 10 year economic projection and the lack of daycare and childcare even mentioned in the report. And whether this is something that you put on the agenda so that this can be amended and something can be placed in there and then are you as commissioners going to commit to searching out day viable daycare solutions that are that are already self standing in the state of Washington? The one hospital that I mentioned has an award winning daycare. You have two hospitals in Clickittack County that could absolutely be considered for that kind of project. And that I'm holding you accountable. If you've been talking about this 15, 20 years, let me see what you've produced in 15, 20 years because there is a daycare need. And families, you cannot have economic growth without that being part of the economic plan. So I'm asking for that. And I'm and I want to see your data and I want to see where you've gone and what who you've talked to. And that's what I'm asking for because I that will be my baby to literally see daycare open up in this county and you guys participate in this. Thank you for your time.
Gabrielle, can you give us your email address or please email B O C C at Clickittack County? I had some documents to send you, but if he didn't have your email.
I've got it. It's on the B O C C. I've got it.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, yeah, I'm I'm the girl that you guys know. I I I believe she has it and I'll put it in the chat if you need that, too. I don't mind. So yes.
Chat does not work. We've got it.
Oh, okay. If you've got it, that's great. I'd love to see that. And then I'd like to see what the plan is from from this day forward. And and that's my expectation for the county commissioners. So get your traveling boots on and let's go see some daycares in the state of Washington. And I'm happy to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert. I'm going to go. We are still in citizen comment. I'll get folks in the room since there have been some non speakers. Nope, okay. Online, is there anybody else that wishes to make that one? Lynn Mason, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, commissioners, for letting me speak. I just want to play devil's advocate for a second here. You know, listening to the comments on the solar farms, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of the solar farms. I I also think they're probably going to be a big eyesore. But I do have a problem with people telling people what to do with their farmland. And I just can't justify how people can talk about liberties and freedom. And yet they want to tell farmers what they can and can't do with their farmland. And also tell them what kind of crops they need to grow. I feel like that definitely is not constitutional and goes against people's freedoms to do what they wish with their with their own property. I mean, if people don't like it, they should think about purchasing possibly that property to stop whatever is going to happen. Now, like I said, I'm not super pro solar farms or big corporations coming in. But just listening to the comments about our farmland just does not compute for me when people have their own land and their own rights to do what they see fit with their land with what they need to do to make their land viable and sometimes maybe even be able to hang on to their land economically. So that was just the thought that I had. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Mason. Okay, still in citizen comment. I will look online. Lisa Evans, are you here to make comment?
Hi, yes, good afternoon. I'm Lisa Evans. I live in White Salmon. I just wanted to read a a little bit from the Clickittack County Republicans platform just stating that we believe the proper role of government is to provide for the people only those critical functions which cannot be performed by individuals or private organizations as being the most effective, responsible, least intrusive and responsive government. So just for the past several weeks, suddenly daycare has is one issue that keeps being brought up. And I'm I'm not quite sure where that's coming from and why the expectation is that you guys are supposed to provide.
Oh, Ms. Evans, we've we've lost you. Start.
Ms. Evans, if you can hear us, your screen froze and we lost your voice. Please call back.
Okay. Yeah, okay, we will come back. If she comes back. If not, I'm going to go on. If there's anybody else that wishes to make public comment. In the room? Yeah, in the room. Oh, in the room. Okay, yes, go ahead.
I'm Debbie Wagner with C's. I just have a quick question. You made comment for your meetings that you need the community. So how many people do we need to write you saying that we need a community?
Now, let me, let me clarify.
I don't understand.
So that I can, so that, so I am crystal clear. When I say community meetings, I am speaking of community council meetings that are in my district that I do get invited. So that is the community of Wishram. I go to the community of Dallasport. I go to High Prairie, Lyle, Snowden, Clickittack, Glenwood are the communities that in the past I have, those are the ones that if I don't hear from them, I reach out to them. Those are the, those are the communities that have community councils in my district that I go and just give an update and have, I guess, I'll call it a town hall. We can just talk about different stuff as far as that's going on. I think what you are referring to would be more of a general meeting of the board in, say, Goldendale or somewhere else.
And how many people would have to write in for that?
It would be, that would have to be a decision of the board. The Goldendale is not in my district. And so I would defer to the commissioner that it is in the district or unless it was a general town, you know, a general meeting, that would be a meeting of the board of commissioners and that would have to be the board's decision, not me as an individual commissioner.
Correct. And I would say that if this was a Goldendale meeting with the city of Goldendale at their facility, there is no solar project stated for the city of Goldendale. There's no solar projects in or around Goldendale that are in District Three. Those would be in District Two, so.
Okay, Lisa, are you back?
I am back. I'm sorry for the tech issue there. I got dropped. Anyways, I'll just, I'll just finish up what I was saying is I would just ask the commissioners to encourage private business, business growth. I mean, I I understand, you know, Gabrielle is very passionate about daycare and that's fantastic. And if she is an energetic, then I would love to see that energy put though into private daycare and and letting private citizens who love children and really want to take care of children to, you know, to to run the daycares, not to have the government running the daycares. I don't I don't see that as as a job that should be placed on your shoulders. So again, just the larger message being, you know, just there's a lot of challenges going on, but let's kind of take that embrace that move growth into the private business sector. And and then I just want to remind everybody it's it's election day. So if you haven't got your ballots in, do that. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. We are still in citizen comment. I will come back to the room again, since I have several times. No, still though, okay. Sheriff Song, here, any public comments from you? Okay, thank you. I'm going to go back to, or I guess. Agenda items, okay, back online. If there's anybody that wishes to probably public comment, this is your opportunity. Not seeing anybody.
0088.
Okay, 0088 is unmuted. Go ahead.
Yes, this Delmer Eldred, Goldendale, Washington. And I would like to ask the commissioners if they can honestly tell me that they have no known applications or filings that have been submitted for night road industrial solar project or any new solar project site in the Goldendale area.
I can only speak for myself. To my knowledge, there there is.
No, I'm asking commissioners as a, as a whole. I want you guys, do you guys know of any filings or applications that have been submitted for night road industrial solar project or any new solar industrial projects in the Goldendale area?
No.
So all three of us say no.
Yeah.
So you guys have, there, as far as you know, there is no there is no one that is seeking development for solar industrial sites in the Goldendale area.
That's not the question. The question.
There's no applications that have been submitted.
Correct.
No applications and no filings have been submitted for any solar site, industrial sites in Goldendale area?
That we know of.
Not that I know of.
All we have currently submitted is one site on the east end that is currently under construction. And one site on the east end called Bluebird who has submitted their application. Those are the only applications that have been submitted.
Right, but that night road has had preliminary meetings with the planning department as at least I've been told that I'm not aware of that, but they have not. And and as we all know, they, or or at least we've been told, they have leased up some land for potential. And they've asked about requirements, but they have not submitted an application. So we, the project may or may not come to fruition.
So yeah, so just to clear my understanding is we have no, no filings, no anything about any solar industrial sites that are going to be in the process in Goldendale area or night road.
You need clarification because the question keeps changing, so, right? With, there's no such thing as no anything. We don't have any permits or applications on file that we have.
Right.
Okay, may I request that at any time there is any filings or applications that the public be noticed immediately that the county is, has been approached for advancement of solar development sites?
At the point of an application, the public will be notified. At the.
Then application is accepted.
That an application is accepted. As complete, when there is discussions, we have folks on all kinds of things that come in and talk about stuff. That doesn't mean we're not going to notify the public because it doesn't, it's not a real project until an application is submitted and is deemed complete. But at that point, yes, the public is notified.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are still in citizen comment. There's somebody online, unmute yourself. Star six, if you're on a phone, raise your hand if you're in Zoom or just unmute yourself. Turn your camera on. Nope, nobody. Back in the room again. Because it changes in here sometimes. No, yes, sir.
So I just wanted to respond to Gabrielle and Lisa.
So I just wanted to respond to Gabrielle and Lisa. The, the, the county uh, childcare is not a core function of county government in the county government that I know in Washington state. It is something that we support. It is something that we spend funds on to help the community. It is something that we have worked on for a very long time, but it is not a core function. What we have done recently is, is we hired a new small business development center employee and that person has extensive background in childcare and daycare and actually started one.
Yep.
And that person, we are hoping is going to work with the private citizens of this county to hopefully start a childcare, multiple child cares. Uh, what I have heard anecdotally over the course of COVID is that many childcare centers actually closed because people went from working, you know, all the time out to living from home. And the childcare centers couldn't make a go of it because they lost all their, their childcare or their, their children. And so that has, you know, of course, coming back from that takes time. You have to be able to as the populace goes back to work and, and we're seeing that. Um, it is something that, that I've tried to get you the information on Gabrielle of what the Child Care Committee is doing. Our environmental special, environment economic specialist has been working on the Childcare Committee as well. It's something that did, we have been talking about for a very long time. But if it's not a core function of county government, there are many other things that demand our resources that would get prioritized above childcare because we have core functions that aren't even fully funded right now.
Okay, we are still in citizen comment. Thanks for those comments. Go for this. If there's anybody online. Get our attention. Not seeing anybody. No. Any, so actually I would add, since we have some time and there's the citizens or not. Um, I would just follow up on that. I, I agree. I'm very sympathetic as far as that I know childcare is uh, it's an issue. It is definitely an issue of economic development, business development, but it is principally a private sector issue. And that the county's role, I don't believe we don't have any role. We do have a role, but it could be more the, what are the barriers to the private sector being able to operate childcare if it's, if it is you know, onerous regulations or things that don't make sense or other kind of requirements? We definitely have a role in advocating uh, for the changes, things that are, but it's, you know, we may have a role as an employer. I think ultimately, you know, uh, Ms. Gilbert had referenced the, the program uh, you know, the hospital. I think that was principally put in to provide daycare for their employees. They may have opened some of it up to um, non-employees. I don't know. And that might be something that the county at least looked at as a, as a major employer. If that was an issue with us being able to fill positions um, as a, just another benefit, but that would be as an employer. I don't really see us having a role in providing childcare, daycare facilities for the general population. As Commissioner Anderson said, that is not really a core function of county government and we again, it's not gonna not sympathetic. It's like, but we, we have an, we have plenty on our plate already that are our core functions that we're supposed to be providing without, without adding to it. We are still in citizen comment. So we got two more minutes. If there's anybody uh, that wishes to provide public comment, that's not already spoken. Now one minute. Seeing anybody. Mr. Anderson.
I think somebody needs to respond to, to what Greg has said and Sherry has said. About Commissioner Christopher recusing himself from character solar, okay? We all went to, I don't know if you did Dave, but what the solar company had put on for their little public this way. You didn't go, but, but both of us did.
Yeah.
And we have heard you speak multiple times, Greg, about uh, Dave being in support of solar and asking him if he's going to recuse himself because you say he's in support of solar, okay? So in that instance, you're already pushing for one commissioner to recuse themselves. Yet we all have seen what has happened in here. The news is seeing it. Everybody's seen the back and forth between you and Commissioner Christopher and this has gotten very personal. We can tell this when you were doing public records request for every piece of information that we've ever created, okay? And of course, that shows it is very personal. And we've seen what's happened in the radio and the news where you were uh, inadvertently accused of something that you did not do. I listened to what the uh, uh, radio station said and when they said that you did not make those statements, of course, you didn't make those statements and I'm sorry that they were attributed to you. I'm sorry for that. Nobody deserves to be disparaged like that publicly. Now, with that being said, because there is this personal nature. Now, if I was the solar company or anybody who's putting, you know, an application forward and I don't get what I want, I'm going to use that to sue, just like you would use that to sue. There's a reason that we don't usually speak about projects because you, our people have used the appearance of fairness doctrine. People made, Sherry's made statements about that. That's why in most instances, we're supposed to keep our mouths shut and we're supposed to be the ones that only make decisions. Because otherwise it will be used in court against us and then it'll just turn into, nothing will ever get done, okay? We can't have meetings before there is a public process. If we go out and do things ahead of the public process, that sets us up for liability for someone to sue or somebody else saying, you've already made up your mind. I try to keep my mouth shut, but sometimes it's really difficult up here when people are verbally, you know, attacking each other back and forth and saying all these things. Now, I understand why he would recuse himself based on the interactions that you two have had. I understand why Dave has not recused himself, even though you asked him to, when you're saying that he is in support of solar. When he responds back that he's in support of the ten-year economic strategic plan and he's carrying it out, okay? Very often, we don't respond back to you because if we did respond back to you, that will have negative repercussions for the county down the road when all of this is used in court. And that's the way we have to play, play this situation. Because otherwise we're creating a liability for the county and we just, we can't do that. So I hope you understand where we're coming from. I personally have tried to make sure that anything that happens out there is through a very public process. That is why in January I asked for it to go through the conditional use permit process because that creates the best about of ability that we have as commissioners to ensure that the public's needs and desires are heard and that they're taken into consideration. On top of that, I very clearly stated that it would be a very hard sell with me if I had to hear something that was, that did not have an EIS done on it for anything that was out there or a large solar project. Every one of those decisions is to be transparent and to give the public the most amount of say during that process. Now, there's other projects like the one that Bluebird that's going through the application process right now. That the two projects or potential project and the, the application are completely different, completely different environments, completely different issues, and I don't want to try to lump them together because that doesn't make any sense. Each project, especially when you look at big projects throughout the state, are done on an individual project basis. And they have huge stacks and reams of paper in order to address the environment, to address the economic, to address the, the visual impacts, and all these things get taken on a per-project basis. And that was my, my whole goal in January, listening to what the public had to say of why I sent it, I wanted it to go through a conditional use permit process. And I know I've been raked over the coals multiple times saying that, oh, you're doing this to try to screw us. That was never my intention. My goal was to ensure that you have a voice in the process. Now, it may take a while for us to respond to your public records request where you're asking for every bit of information that's occurred. That, that's, that's a lot. I mean, that's, that's a lot to ask for and we will do our best, but it may take some time. I don't know how long it could take, but public records requests, use, I've seen documents in there that are this deep. That may be how thick it is. You should see how many emails we get a day.
Okay, we are out of public comment period. This is a time set aside for public hearings, public meetings and bid openings. Our first order of business is a public meeting to consider final approval of a plat vacation SPL two thousand and six dash fifty-one B. Uh, I won't read the parcel numbers. This is in the uh, Houston area I, I know from before. This is the applicant is SDS Company LLC. And we will start with a staff review from uh, Ms. Denise, I believe.
Hello, can you hear me? It's Denise.
Yes, thank you.
First off, I want to apologize to the commissioners. I should have included in the memo explanation of why we are approving this again. Uh, on October nineteenth, you approved uh, per resolution one oh four two one, the approval of this plat vacation and this today we're actually signing the plat that represents that. Um, so with that, I'll move forward. The short plat vacation number SPL two thousand six fifty-one B is a proposal to vacate SPL two thousand six dash fifty-one in its entirety. Um, the proposed plat is located within portions of section thirteen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty-four of four north, eleven east, Click attack county in the Houston vicinity off of Oak Ridge Road. The administrative review of this short plat vacation has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road health and planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to preliminary approval have been met. If the board finds it's in the public's interest to approve this short plat vacation, a motion needs to be made granting final approval of SPL two thousand six dash fifty-one, the applicant SDS LLC. Um, there are sev- there are several, like eight, um, parcels included in here and I'd be happy to um, spell them out if you'd like.
No, I, I think the uh, I think the short plat two thousand and six dash fifty-one is, is a adequate reference.
Okay, and the plat map normally isn't done on a plat vacation, but in this case it's complicated. It, it involves several parcels and it just would clarify things for, for everyone. So we're recording a plat.
Thank you. That concludes your staff report. Any comments, questions?
Clarification question for you. So things on a plat map that are like SDS, a SDS cells, it becomes blue.
Right.
Do we have to change every logo?
No, it's at, at the time of recording, the entity as the entity, so it's them and their heirs and assigns and uh, assume they'll assign it, they'll assign it.
Okay. So questions?
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve final approval of plat vacation SPL two thousand and six dash fifty-one B.
I would second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion in a second uh, to approve the plat vaca- plat vacation. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passed. The plat is vacated. It's not vacation. Understand this rights fine on anything but my mark. Which is its whole end in you. I've got my middle initial and my last name. It's working now. Okay, our next order of business is a public meeting to consider short plat alteration SPL twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. These are parcel number zero four dash sixteen dash zero four one eight dash twenty-six oh two uh, slash zero zero and parcel zero four dash sixteen dash zero four one eight dash twenty-six oh three dash zero zero and zero four dash sixteen dash zero four one eight dash twenty-six oh four slash zero zero. The applicant is Joan Atkins. Do a start with a staff report. I'm assuming that is you as well, Denise.
I am, yeah, still here.
Okay, sure.
Short plat SPL twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three is a proposal to move lots two and three of SPL twenty eighteen dash twenty-six from Dancing Mountain Road, a private frontage to Pine Forest County Road frontage in order to provide easier access to utilities. The proposed plat is located within a portion of section four, township four north range sixteen east Click Tech County in the Golden Dale vicinity. The administrative review of the short plat has been completed. Signatures have been obtained from the road health and planning departments and the treasurer's office. All conditions attached to the preliminary approval have been met. Board finds that it's in the public's interest to approve the short plat. A motion needs to be made granting final approval of SPL twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three applicant Joan Atkins.
Thank you. Discussion, comments, this is just boilerplate. Yeah, okay, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve short plat of alteration SPL twenty twenty-one dash twenty-three. Atkins is Joan Atkins.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to grant the short plat alteration. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes. Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us along to consent. Anybody have any issues?
Sir, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda with six items.
I would second the one.
Okay, I have a motion in a second on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes. Consent is consented to.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to we adopt the resolution of the matter of approving or adopting the twenty twenty preliminary budget and setting a public hearing to be held on November ninth, twenty twenty-one at one thirty P M.
You said twenty twenty-two, right?
Uh, I said twenty twenty-one.
November nine, twenty twenty-two preliminary budget.
I heard adopting the twenty twenty budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, well, let me reclarify. Uh, adopting the twenty twenty-two preliminary budget and setting a public hearing for, to be held on November ninth, twenty twenty-one at one thirty P M.
I will second that.
Okay, I got a motion in a second, adopting the resolution. Adopting the preliminary budget, the twenty twenty-two preliminary budget. Discussion. It has been advertised, um, so we have our two-week advertisement before November nine.
In both counties.
In both county papers, so, okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
So do we, are we required to put it in both newspapers or do we just do that because we want to spend more money?
We want to be transparent.
We do it to have fire circulation. A lot of people down at that and I'm sure do not take the Golden Dale Sentinel and vice versa. So it's kind of a courtesy to our citizens.
We're sending the transparents.
But how, how many different things are we actually advertising that?
I do not use the other newspaper if it's a project that's specific to this end of the county.
Okay.
That more of a quasi judicial type of a situation.
Right.
But if it has something to do with countywide, I use both papers.
You put it both.
Yes.
Is there a way we can find out how much money we're spending on that? Because we have the paper, right? And, and I know that it's not cheap to put anything in that other place.
I think it's, it's been pretty comparable, a little bit more than the Golden Dale, but it's been comparable.
Really that close?
It's their public domain.
I think there's been, it's like ten percent. Sorry, I think they're ten or fifteen percent.
But it is, it is, it is a courtesy.
So it's worth that for all.
I'm just, the only thing I, I worry about is that if we're not putting everything in the other paper, that somebody will come back and be like, well, I'm used to getting it in my paper, but this is the paper of record, right? And so somebody might get upset. I mean, we do have people that are on the West End that are involved in things in the central part of the county. So I just, I don't know. I don't know, you know, we go out and have a newspaper record. I understand that, you know. I, I understand that, you know, there are people down there that read both newspapers. It's just-
Well, everything gets published in the, the paper of record. Some things also get published also in the other paper. So.
Oh, no, it's fine. I mean, we just approved it.
Time to take it out in the future.
We do try to encourage people to put, you know, sign up on the county website. That way, if there's a public notice that is posted, they will get, hit their email and they'll be able to know whatever's coming out.
That's what I tell people.
Yes.
Look on the website. Okay, bills?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we pay the accounts payable warrants the amount of $186,877.19 of payroll benefit warrants in total of $0.00, ending for the date ending November 1st, 2021.
Motion and second on paying the bills. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Did I miss something? One here for a consent agenda item.
Yes.
Yeah.
She had a vacation carryover request.
Which we could have been really wanting to.
Yeah, why, you want to explain? I mean, I know with the previous vacation carryover request, you had questions, but you-
I, I will approve all vacation carryover requests until July 1st. If they don't use it by July 1st.
Oh, that's when you're in the heart. That's when you're the heart.
I would give you time to use it if you've had inner office or COVID or pregnancies or staff loss.
So you're on July 1st.
You now have six months to use it.
That's consistent. Okay, that's consistent.
Good to know.
Good to know.
So, yeah. If I can ask to get on the light first, my answer will be no. Sorry, that would be my answer anyway, so.
Okay, that brings us to elected officials report prosecuting attorney, Amy Caddell. You, I saw you on here earlier. Okay. Mr. Caddell. Anything?
Yeah, I don't have anything right now. Thank you, John.
Okay.
Uh, Q, I was asked during a meeting last night, how much did we authorize for the firm out of DC for the track D litigation? Did we have a retainer we had to pay?
There was no retainer. There's a, a cap of $100,000.
Cap of 100? Okay, 100K. And the other question was is, does, does that come out of the supplemental for this year's budget or is that next year's budget?
Uh, that would be an answer for you guys to figure out.
It's coming out of non-departmental and it could be, aren't we all fine right now so far?
He did affect it on 3,000. That was part of our request, like if you guys weren't in with the 100,000, we'd take it out.
So it's in our 2022 non-departmental budget.
Okay, because I didn't know. And, and if we've been spending much money in that 100,000 already?
We need 21.
Okay.
And actually-
Okay, any other questions for the prosecuting attorney?
Nope.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other thing for? I can't believe we'd get out of here before-
Last year, you like ended this meeting at 1:49.
Yeah, it's after the budgets. Once you get it ready to go fly out there, it's like you've been, you get a little break in the- It's nice.
Butt off for three months.
Right.
I'm like, okay, what do we do?
Now, what do we do? But I know, the first Thursday off where, where we're not in here with people, bringing numbers at us. No, no. We'll have other things to do, just not budgets, which is nice. All right, if not, then I'm-
Let's see about board pending.
That's how it started.
I don't think it is. It's exactly one.
Mr. Motioner, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to adjourn at 1:49.
Yes. Okay, I have a motion a second to adjourn at 1:49. All those in favor say aye.
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 Wait, that's all it took was for me to just say that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't even-
Say that earlier. You know, last year, they, we got 1150.